This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, August 15, 2023, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. We are not live streaming tonight's meeting, but it is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/ISD535 following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/ backslash Symbli, S-I-M-B-L-I. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pekel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Treasurer Garcia.
Here.
Clerk McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Just a note to everybody, if we're still meeting at 7 o'clock, we'll take a survey and see if we want to continue or take a break. Item three is comments to the board. We have no comments to the board this evening, but we want to make sure the community knows it is important for the school board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and during comments to the board. Members of the community who want to make comments to the board must email the Assistant School Board Clerk by 5:00 PM on Monday before a regular meeting at asb@rochesterschools.org. Item 4.1 is our first information item, school forest designation. Superintendent Pekel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and Board members. I am not going to steal any of the thunder from our ever-creative and entrepreneurial team at John Marshall High School, so I'm going to invite our Principal Matt Ruzek to come up, and Shane Hewitt, our instructional coach. I will just say that in exchanging emails with Matt, I got pretty excited about the idea of a school forest, and part of the process does involve engaging the governing body of our school district in learning about this pretty cool initiative. So, thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah.
So, Shane Hewitt, everyone. So, we are trying, we're in the last stage of the application for this school forest initiative, and so really what we need is just your consent to continue filling out that application, getting it so we can have a partnership with the DNR. This would allow us to have access to curriculum, get access to naturalists, and they could work with our teachers. Really, it also might give us some access to grants. In doing so, then, it would allow us to make renovations in kind of that particular area. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it. It's over by the stadium. There's a pond, kind of butts up next to the trailer courts there. So, there's a little prairie there with a pond that kind of needs to be spruced up. We're kind of also going to be working, I think, with the city. We're, in fact, we, Aaron Vasquez also, thanks, thank you, sorry about that. Aaron Vasquez is also helping me with this, and she's going to actually be meeting with Sewer and Water this Thursday, because we're going to be looking eventually, hopefully, at dredging a little bit of that, that might be messy, and then improving our prairie area, and hopefully soon, this spring, getting some bees back there that we can actually harvest the honey and then donate that honey. So, that's kind of what we need your consent for, and we're really excited about it.
Director Chair, this is the second school forest designation in our school district. The first was at Riverside a few years ago. For point of reference, it requires no funding or extra funds from the school district. It requires no real continued effort by staff, extraordinary. This is a volunteer effort. It was really spurred by Jacob Hess. He should be granted some recognition here. He was an Eagle Scout candidate, and now is an Eagle Scout, but last year needed a project, and so he identified our school pond area that did function as an outdoor classroom for a significant period of time, and then, as anything does outdoors, it began to weather and show some wear and tear. It has a shed back there. The prairie is actually pretty remarkable. It's a small area, but it is all natural, native to Minnesota flora and fauna. There's even some buckthorns, so we got to do some work with some invasive species. I know, right? It's everywhere. But in it, because we're proudly a full-service community school, we had...
Thank you so much. First timers here. We had partnership with Sargent Nursery, we had partnership with the Department of Natural Resources, we worked with our facilities and ground crew, Bill Burton, Mike Stock, and all of them came out, and we met in our school forest site. Then Jacob led us on what his Eagle Scout project would be. He brought in wood chips, he partnered with Lowe's, he built some freestanding garden plots out there that are going to help us continue to kind of expedite the process of reintroducing native grasses to the area, and so we have the vast majority of trees are native to Minnesota. I was just telling Mr. Bakken that we have some beautiful walnuts that have already started to replant themselves, and so we're going to help support those. But even with just what Jacob had done last year for his Eagle Scout project, we had classrooms that were going out there, and not just science-based classrooms, math, reading, all of them were utilizing our space. So, it's really going to be a cool effort and partnership, and we're really excited about it. It also brings in another aspect of our local community, as well as our state organization with the Department of Natural Resources. So, you can certainly come out. Right now, there's a construction parking area with a holding zone, so it is a little bit difficult.
Difficult to get to, to navigate.
A little bit, but we'll, once we're done with that, then we'll have more access to it.
Superintendent.
With apologies, Chair Nathan, this opportunity to endorse this good work was so recent that we don't have a resolution there. I know that we can be somewhat informal, but I might suggest a simple resolution on the part of the board enthusiastically endorsing the designation of the school forest at John Marshall and conveying our support for the effort.
I hear a recommendation from the superintendent for a resolution. Would somebody like to make a motion for that resolution?
Someone.
Second. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion, questions? What's the timeline?
It's, we're going to, I'm sorry, you can go ahead. So, the timeline is, it's going to actually be probably a larger process, because we're trying to work with the city to come and make a plan for us, to kind of chunk the projects, and then, from there, knowing the cost of those projects, working to get certain grants to cover that. We are, I am also the Senator Director at JM for the 21st Century Grant, so there will be some things that we can cover as well, through the 21st Century Grant as well, but it's going to be a process, but...
Submission of the grant will happen this fall.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Do we identify a particular area of the John Marshall property that is going to be receiving the designation of school forest?
Yeah, that's the nice part about working with the DNR, so they, well, they've already come out to our site, and the spot that's already designated as our school forest area and pond is sufficient for a school forest site. It's actually three times the size of what Riverside's school forest site was, but Riverside's is the smallest in the state, so I'm not bragging a whole lot there when I say that. But it's, yeah, it's already predetermined. It's that small little corner between the football field and the trailer park, so...
Director Barlow.
And so, Matt, this is an opportunity to acknowledge your leadership and the team you're working with. I'd like to maybe suggest at some point, if you, as principal, choose to honor or acknowledge Jacob either in school or extend to us the opportunity to meet him one day, we'd like to do that, but please invite us when the ribbon cutting occurs, or when you guys actually get the grants in.
Yeah.
And that first shovel or whatever begins to occur.
Yeah, and I can, I'll take some photos and send them to Dr. Pekel so that you all can see, because I'm a dad and I like taking progress photos, so I'll send as we make progress. We would invite you all, you certainly can come, it's just not as appealing with the construction fences around it, so...
Does the school forest designation have some duration to it? Does it control the ability to use that property?
That I don't know. That's something I'd have to look into. I'm hoping it's kind of for the long haul, but that's something I'd have to check into and get back to you on.
I can, I can answer that right now. Annually, what they'll do is, after the designation occurs, they'll have a kind of a audit of sorts to see where we're currently at and if we're sustaining. The biggest thing for the designation of the school forest site is that we try and keep it as native as possible. If at some point we can't sustain it through volunteers, or our staff loses interest, or, you know, it gets rezoned and they have to put in another holiday station or something, then the designation would just go away. There's not a requirement as far as a 10-year requirement. As long as we have it, then each, each fall, they'll come back, check to see where we're at, and we'll sustain the designation, and like Mr. Hewitt just said, all that presents to us as access to naturalists, as well as DNR grants. So, it just stays as long as we keep it as they would see it as a natural and native site.
So, it's all upside for as long as we would want to continue to use it as a forest area?
Hundred percent.
Sounds great to me.
Director Workman.
So, I remember at Riverside how the students were involved in doing various things with that area. What plans might there be for JM students to take advantage of that, and, you know, what role would the naturalists have?
Yeah, you know, I think with hard work, and I sit next to Shane, fully ready to share that he and Aaron Vasquez and the students are responsible for the work, it was not me. Then organically, what has happened with JM, because we are a school that's been around since the 50s, we have a lot of alumni that are interested in this as well, so it's not just our current students. The bees that Shane referenced are a family, and they're all Rockets, the parents of proud Rocket parents, and they donate honey to us pretty frequently at school, that they raise on their own family honey farm. So, it's a really, again, blending that fabric of community and school. We'll have, you know, past, future, and present Rockets helping.
Thank you.
There'll be different clubs that, like the Environmental Awareness Club will be working with the bees, along maybe with the Garden Club as well. So, a lot of good things going. I mean, we've had with the Garden Club, kids coming in at 6:30 in the morning to help pick up the grounds.
Wow.
Or coming in the summer, and they just had their sec, third harvest.
Third.
Third harvest, and then we've donated to Teen Challenge, is it Minnesota Teen Challenge?
Yeah.
And then the Next Chapter Ministries as well, so a lot of good things.
I pulled in this morning at a quarter to seven, and there were two Rocket graduates who are picking up trash in our parking lot, who are part of the Garden Club, so, you know.
That's great.
Yeah, the kids are, these students are...
Awesome kids.
The best, yeah.
Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have your consent.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'll just say, Shane, if you need help dredging the pond, Dr. Marvin and I are there. We will be out there.
Oh, you know what? I'm busy that day.
It's power tools, so...
Oh, it's power tools.
This is my, this is my chance, he was my ninth grade English teacher, so...
There you go.
Thank you all so much. Thank you very much.
Item 4.2 is the Rail logo mascot reveal. Superintendent Pekel.
I am excited here as well, and welcome another one of our great school leaders, Molly Murphy, who is our leader at the Rochester Academy for Independent Living, to come up and share this exciting news about a new logo. We know that school culture is made of many things. It's, of course, made by your curriculum, it's made by the educators, and it's also made by symbols, like your logo. And so, things like this are pieces of a puzzle that add up to really fantastic, positive communities for kids, and in the case of Rail, young adults. And so, thank you for the work that you did on this, and we are excited here for the big reveal.
All right. So, I want to start by thanking the Communications Department. Mom Sue and Alex had a big part in this, and worked with us for several months, actually, to create the design and work with students. Actually, Alex was there when students were voting and things like that, so thank you to them. They were awesome in the process. As you mentioned, Kent, that Rail felt like, you know, we wanted to sort of gain our own identity and create kind of that school community behind what we want to be. I'm proud that word has kind of gotten out about the things that we do at Rail. It's like the best school job in the entire world, so it's a great place to be. Staff are amazing there, and the kids are just great. We're going to have 75 students this fall. It's the most by far that Rail has ever had, and so we're excited to welcome them. We have 38 new students coming, so we're going to have, we're going to have a big year, and this will be, this is a perfect time for this to be kind of happening for us.
We're...
Usually...
On the side.
Hey.
There we go. So, what, how we started was, we had opened up voting for two weeks to staff and to students. We made a decision not to extend it further than that, and anybody could submit. We worked with our students that wouldn't be able to probably use a computer, so there were some paper submissions and some drawings and some other things like that. 24 ideas were submitted in two weeks, and those were narrowed down to nine based on some copyright things and some similar logos that have been used either in the district already or surrounding schools. Then we put together a team of students and ESPs and teachers, which is where Alex worked with us from Communications, and then we further narrowed the choices down to three for a final school vote. These were the three options, and I was actually thinking about this the other day. I know where these suggestions came from, but no one else did or does, and all of these were from students, actually. So, some staff did submit some ideas too, but all three of these happened to be from students, and no one knew that when they were narrowing down the choices. The students also put a reason why they wanted the logo that they, the idea that they submitted, and so that's what's in parentheses. So, it came down to the suns, the thunder, and the thunderbirds. We used pictures and words, and then some phrases. We have a software program for our students with disabilities that can kind of put things together if they have some pictures with some words. And then some of our students are able to read and were able to submit their final vote through a Google form, and the others of our kids could circle, or point, or use their assistive technology to vote. So, we did make sure that every student had the opportunity to vote, and then we left that open for one week. And there was actually kind of an overwhelming option that was selected, and so what we are settled on is we are going to be the Rail suns. So, the staff and the students felt that was the best option. Alex created actually quite a few choices with a sun involved, and so then we kind of narrowed, we went from that, and this is the one that we're settling on. So, hopefully we can, you know, get branded a little bit, and, you know, we'll have T-shirts, I'm certain, by, you know, October, and it can be on our new website, and maybe we can also look into changing the signs that say Fertile Middle School to having a sign for Rail, so...
Questions or comments about the process, or we settled on this? Comments or questions from Board members?
Well, I like how you included the students and gave them the opportunity to, and the student who submitted this will probably feel so proud, and hopefully won't get carried away bragging too much, but he has, he or she has to rewrite too.
Yeah.
And, but it's very insightful on your part to have included them and allow them to be part of the branding, because it's part of who they are. They spend a significant amount of time there, and so thank you for having done that.
Thanks. That student actually did graduate and has aged out, but I think is proud to have left something behind, and, yeah, you're exactly right. It's exciting for, the students are very excited about it, yeah.
Well, if this branding is as successful as the presentation was, you'll probably have to think about what the capacity of Rail is. You said we have the most students that we've ever had. Do we, do we have a capacity issue?
No, I mean, it would be like saying Century High School has a capacity issue. Any student that, you know, is an RPS student that has, you know, completed four years at high school and has a developmental disability and does not accept a diploma, they can't, they can't graduate, because they're still considered public school students, gets to stay with us, and actually, new legislation allows them to stay till they're 22, their 22nd birthday, so that's a really big deal, really big deal. Most of our students have been in, had public school services since birth, so those parents are coming to the end of 21, 22 years of public school service, and they're very grateful. The families are awesome. I, well, I invite anybody to come. It is, it's seriously like the greatest day every day. It's so much fun.
Superintendent.
It is. For some reason, when I go to Rail, like my allergies are really bad, because my eyes water a lot. I don't know what that is, actually. You do fantastic work. We do have a capacity issue, though, in the sense of that facility.
Yeah.
So, we will be bringing recommendations to this board over the next year about that facility and several others in the district that I think will be very important steps forward for great programs like Rail, so stay tuned on that one. We know we have great support for kids there. We need to make sure that, as Molly says, we have the capacity to serve them in the right space going forward.
Director Cook.
Just wanted to add, I regularly review new logos and go through the...
Oh, yeah.
... kind of diligence process that you described of checking for copyright issues and checking for similarity with other marks and things like that. And objectively, this is a really good logo. I mean, for whatever that's worth, I see a lot of these. I like that the sun is on the top, and there's like a motion that's embodied there, and it captures a spirit. The color scheme is good, too. I just, I really think it's good, so well done.
Alex, Alex gets all the credit. Alex, Monday, Communications, she gets all the credit for that, that piece of it, yeah.
Kind of evokes like a first-place ribbon.
Yes.
That is a good point.
Anything else, Board members?
Well, thank you very much. It was good to see you. Yes, you guys too. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Item 4.3, another information item, is Back to School 2023-24. Superintendent Pekel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Shockingly, we are on the verge of another school year. Last year, week, we had our school improvement teams together for a day at Dakota Middle School, well, no, at, where were we for the school improvement team session? At Century High School, and then we had deeper learning teams at Dakota, and today we had all of our new teachers at Mayo High School, and so we are in the run-up, and so we want to provide the board with a very brief overview of three broad components of our getting ready for the school year. Ask Dr. Agbamu to give a brief overview of some of the preparation work we're doing on the academic front during our workshop week. Ask Mom Sue Knudsen to give an overview of some of the outreach we're doing with families to let them know what's coming, and ask Jackie Peterson to give an overview of some of the things we're doing to integrate new students into our schools. You're not going to hear from Carl Bakken on HR, and that's not because Carl is not a scintillating presenter, but it is because our human resource and staffing issue is very much in full swing and quite fluid. I will say, things are looking better this year in terms of shortage positions broadly defined, which is exciting, but we also, like every school district, remain very engaged in trying to fill all of our positions. We are looking for about four or five nutrition services positions, five maintenance positions, 37 education support professionals across the district, and about 33 teachers. And so, just for example, in 2022, we were looking for 90 education support professionals at this time, and now it's 37. That still is a stretch, but Carl and the team are working very hard. We had a job fair here this year, and if you want to work, if you're out there, the millions watching at a great school district, please get in touch with us. So, we will be sharing more information with the board on where we end up on the staffing front, but my thanks to Carl and the team for what they're doing, and I'll turn it over to these colleagues to give you a brief overview of the rest of our preparation work.
Well, like Dr. Pekel said, it was an exciting day at Mayo today with about 100-plus new teachers, you know, agreeing to be part of the ROPS team and the trainees for the next three days. And so, August 21st is a flexible PD professional day, and for E, early childhood to 12th grade and adult literacy, that's, again, nutrition staff, that is under a different jurisdiction, the scopes. And then Tuesday, of course, again, is another day to train ESPs. There are mandates that have just come from the new legislature about training for ESPs that we're going to spend a lot of the time prior to the start of the school year, making sure that we have all of those covered, and of course, early childhood, our partner, educational assistance also. Wednesday is the big one for us, and Wednesday, the total focus on Wednesday is on structured literacy and geode... literacy and geocore column, and so we're going to be in three different buildings. You're welcome to join us. We're going to be at the Longfellow, Bishop, and mostly Longfellow and Bishop, we wanted to use the, the new beautiful sites where we have, you know, a good space and the audio works very well. So we're going to be really focused on those days, at those two sites mostly. And then Thursday is a day set aside for E-12 licensed staff to get their classrooms ready, and it's a non-duty day for ESPs. And Friday, this is a non-duty day for all ESPs and staff. So we are pretty excited about the possibilities on Wednesday, where we're really, really owning this work and, and not just literacy, there are other PDs around the district from special ed to PE, just name it. It's all over the district. It's happening on Wednesday, the 23rd, but I, I kind of emphasized literacy because it's major work for us, but on that day, every single content area, K-12, and E-allow special ed will be exposed to one form of training or the other. I pass the baton.
Hello. Is this on? Can you guys hear me? So communications started our back-to-school messaging back in May before students went home. We created what was called, what we called a summer take-home folder. We put things in there like school supply lists, transportation, registration forms, school year calendars, et cetera. And then in the last two weeks, we have mailed and emailed the kickoff, the kickoff the 23, 24 school year letter to all of our staff. We launched the back-to-school webpage on our website with information about schedule pickups, school bell times, school supply lists, and then information about Step Into Learning and Meet Me in the Middle. And then we've also emailed families with all this information. We've duplicated all of this throughout our social media platforms, and we'll continue to do so over the next several weeks. And in a few days, fingers crossed, everybody will be launching our new website and with that, our new app. So all of this information, we have been backfilling on our new app, so once you get the new app, you'll see all that stuff too, and it'll be easily accessible to all families. We are also working to translate these materials that we have, so we have instructions on how to change, especially on our old, our current and our new websites, how to change your language from English to whatever your preferred language is on your app. If your phone, so if you have an iPhone and you chose Italian as your preferred language, the app will automatically translate to that language for you, so you don't have to do that. But we have videos in Spanish and I think it's simplified Chinese on how to download the app, how to walk through that, and that's what our, our new vendor could offer, but we plan to have translations in Spanish, Somali, Khmer, simplified Chinese, Vietnamese, and Amharic with all this information.
I have the final slide, and this is the welcoming of students and families to the new school year, and these headings will be familiar to you. We're doing some of the same things, but I wanted to give you an idea of what those events look like. At elementary, Step Into Learning, again, will be two days where families can come and have an appointment with their classroom teacher. They also have an opportunity to meet with school personnel, SAC, the school nurse, anyone that they might need to connect with individually, as well as some community partners like the flu clinic and receiving backpacks and materials. The elementary team will be doing a survey on, onsite for families, and hoping that everyone will complete that because what we really want to do is see if the, the event is meeting the needs of our families, and specifically if two days is of value to them enough to seek, to find daycare and make that work in their families. So we really want to hear from, from parents and caregivers about their, their ideas around that. Middle school again is doing Meet Me in the Middle. I had a really nice conversation with Angie McAndrews from Kellogg about their particular event to give you kind of a, a vision of what that's going to look like. They will be doing some welcoming with students who are going into eighth grade, who are Kellogg ambassadors, Kellogg crew, I think they're called, the students, and they will be doing tours for the kids. They'll do a mini schedule where each subject area will be an activity, so the teacher and support teachers will take kids on a tour at one hour. They'll spend another hour opening a locker because that's a big deal, and navigating, and then Angie said they would make sure at the end of the day, they're going to make sure every student gets walked to the area they'll be going to, to catch a bus or head for home or catch a ride, so that, that first day of, of actual school, they'll know exactly what to do. The, the ratio of students will be very small because teachers that don't teach sixth grade or maybe like a success coach or an instructional coach will also be involved. It's all hands on deck, so a classroom will have more than the classroom teacher. It'll have a couple other staff members and students. And then high school, I think our logo is very 80s looking for back to school, so I'll just say
Yes.
I was in high school in the 80s. I started at Mayo High School as a 10th
It's all been downhill since the 80s.
I know, right? My alma mater, Mayo High School. Back then, we were 10th graders to start our high school years, and my orientation was, fortunately, my sister was a year ahead of me at Mayo, and so I took my, my folder that I was given by Mayo High School with the, the floor plan on the back, the round foot, and my sister took my schedule and she went through and made an arrow right or left after each class, so I'd know which way to go, so I wouldn't be late. You leave your classroom for this class, go left, go right. That was my orientation. I'll just say, my daughter taught at Mayo for three years, and she designed an app, a, a mobile app, so that you could put your, your current classroom in and the classroom you're going to, and it would tell you to go right or left. I, I think it's still in use, I don't know. But that was my orientation to high school. Now, I'll tell you what Mayo High School is doing, and I kind of want to go there because it sounds really fun. They also will have small groups. They're training their, their juniors and seniors who love to come and be involved in orienting the incoming ninth graders. They have so many that there will be a ratio of, of two mentors to eight students. That's a lot of juniors and seniors who sign up to do this. They will give some tours and training to the students. There'll be some icebreakers, and then they are going to follow a mini schedule as well. And they have broken up those mini, the, the class sessions into PBIS lessons, so every teacher will have a lesson that's prepared for them. They'll give that lesson, and then they'll do an activity with the students, and then the students will go on to their next class. They, over lunch, this is what I love, over lunch, the PTA and the Booster Club are providing inflatables, a DJ and rock climbing, so they'll get to do all kinds of fun activities to, to enjoy during their lunch. So that's kind of what the schedules look like. So it's more than just a sit-down, and they will hear a little bit about the, the handbook and those kinds of things, but it's really meant to be a huge welcome by all staff and a large amount of, of students from those junior and senior classes. And it's very similar at the other schools, too. I just want you to kind of hear how important this day is at high school and middle school to get kids off on the right foot. That's, that's what it'll look like. Director Workman.
So I remember when the Step Into Learning was pilot program a few years ago. I want to say it was at Bishop?
Started at Bishop through the Innovation Grant, yes.
Right, and then it kind of gradually spread to some other buildings. So are all of our elementary schools doing Step Into Learning now?
Yeah, I'm so happy to say all of them are. For a while, we had maybe half and half, and then last year, we had all but two. That can be very confusing to parents, and so the last two came on board, and just with that really planful way to involve kids in SAC and other activities, so parents don't feel that strain and stress.
I'm, I'm really happy to hear that because I think everything that I heard from parents and, and, well, not so much from students, but parents was just really positive, and they were, and I know it's really helpful to teachers to really have that time with a student ahead of time rather than taking the first month or six weeks to try and figure out where they are. So I'm really glad that our schools are really welcoming to all of our families.
I'd make a very brief point on Step Into Learning, Madam Chair. We are also, though, doing, I really appreciate your comment, Director Workman, we are also doing an evaluation this year of Step Into Learning to be sure that our families think it's worth two days of not having kids in class. There's no question, good things happen. Everything is a cost benefit, and so this year, we are going to be very attentive to the degree to which parents feel that if forced to make a choice, they would prefer to have their students not in school and have that dedicated time with their kid's teacher. We know our teachers and our administrators feel quite positively about it. We want to be sure that parents and caregivers similarly share the same perspective about the value of having kids not there for two days. So I really am eager to see what the results are of that. Dr. Rock is working with some of our elementary pencils to put that together, and I look forward to telling you what the results are.
Great, thank you. Director Barlow.
Dr. Bahamu, just wanted to inquire regarding the time on Wednesday, the 23rd, for the PD. What time will that start?
It starts at 8:00 AM, 8:00 AM till, for as long as, it's all over the district, but the literacy is at Bishop and Longfellow. And for me, it's exciting because this would actually be my first time of being actively involved, because last year, I said yes to the job and ended up staying home until October. So I wasn't previewed to all of this fantastic PDs that will be happening that started today, so. It's from anytime, from 8:00 AM at any of these sites. And I think Momsu, that, the, the package detailing all of the PDs was part of what was mailed home.
To staff, yes, and emailed to staff as well.
We can, we can make sure that board members have that. That's a, Lori, we can make sure that the board members have the schedule for that day, that we have electronically that. Thank you.
We got that already.
Do you? Okay, good.
Jackie, the Step Into Learning days, should it not work for a parent to be able to have their kids participate on that day? Then, then how does the staff work with those parents?
Yeah, they would need to do a makeup time that works for the parents, so it might be that someone goes and takes that teacher's classroom for a half hour on the first day of school and meets, or I do know that the schools will do a normal, regular school day timeframe one day, and then they'll start later, maybe 10 o'clock on the second day, so they go into kind of the dinner hour to try to offer some after, after-school times for parents. But our goal is to have every parent feel that welcoming, you know, time with their teacher, so we would work with parents on their schedule.
Director Marvin.
I, I know all of us really appreciate the kind of planning and thought and coordination that goes into making sure that this first week and the time before the first week of school is really successful for staff, ensuring that they have time to work together, to work on their own, to do district initiatives. I think you've got it exactly right. And for the first day of school, for those new to the building, I love that this district and you and those who work with you have done everything you can to make sure that kids show up, and they're all, when you're new to anything, you're going to be nervous, that they feel less nervous, and I'm really impressed that in the middle school and the high schools, the older students will be there to mentor the younger students. That is good for so many reasons, and it may be as good for the older students as it is for the new ones, when they understand that these kids are looking up to them and that they have a responsibility to ensure that those who are new to the place feel like they belong and know how to do their combinations, because forget, when you're in middle school, forget about worrying about what I'm going to be when I grow up. You're terrified that you won't be able to get your locker open. So I think this is an amazing schedule, and I really appreciate the work.
When I asked Carrie Hackenson about the students, I asked if it was 10th, 11th, and 12th, and she said they have to limit to 11th, 12th grade. There are so many kids that want to be mentors, they can't take everyone if they take all three grades. Angie McAndrews told me that they somehow got lost in the shuffle to apply to be the Comet Crew, so she thought, well, this year, maybe we'll just do it without kids. Well, during the popsicles with the principal, she heard so many times from parents, my, my son or daughter was really looking forward to being on Comet Crew, that they quickly did an application process so the kids can be part of orientation. So I think it says a lot about what the schools are doing to, to create a sense of belonging and connection with our, our kids, that they want so much to do that for their classmates.
Director Cook.
So first, you mentioned an app, Momsu, in connection with the website launch. Can you say a little bit more about the app?
Yes.
Is something different than Skyward, right?
No, it's different than Skyward, correct. It's gonna, we, I went out to send the information today and then realized there was something missing from the app, so until we get that fixed, information will go, won't go out to families. But the app, you can technically download it right now if you want to. It will be, anything we post to the website will go right to the app. So when we have social media posts, it'll go there. When we post news articles, it'll go there, and you have the option to go in and select which schools you want notifications and information from. So if your child, if you have children that go to multiple schools, you can select all those schools. It will translate to whatever language you want it to be in, and then there's additional information such as athletics, and then it syncs to our calendars, so you can go in and say, RPS school board meeting, let me add that directly to my personal calendar, and it'll do all of that. So it's very nifty, it's very cool, it's missing one aspect. As soon as I get that fixed, I will tell you about it.
Exciting.
Yeah.
And the, the, the thing I was hearing as all of you were speaking is the way that, that our district is creating and laying the groundwork for a really great culture for learning this year, starting with the professional development and the emphasis on structured literacy. I know that's a, a major priority for our district, and I'm, I'm so excited that we are taking that opportunity, and I, when I look through this, the itinerary for professional development on that day, it's not just the early elementary teachers that are receiving that opportunity this time, it's all the way through six through 12, which I, I think is an appropriate recognition, that there are a lot of students that are into the middle school and secondary level that will benefit from the structured literacy interventions this year. And I, my hope is that the first type of culture setting, even though it's ambitious, I was at a, my own professional development opportunity last week focused on structured literacy for leaders of school districts. And one of the things, there were actually many things I was really excited about, but one of the things that really stuck with me is how the emphasis on structured literacy interventions has the potential to feel like yet another initiative that's being thrust on school districts and has the potential to turn into something of a box-checking exercise. And I know that we have spent time as leaders of district, district, at this board table, and I know that you, Dr. Agbamu, have, have focused on this, but I, I really hope that this opportunity for the entire district to focus on some professional development opportunities around structured literacy interventions will be embraced as a, authentically as an opportunity to really meet the needs of some students that, that will benefit tremendously from, from getting this work right. So I'm just, I'm really excited that we've identified that as a priority and that we're reaching leaders or, or teachers at all of the grades. And then, and then next, the, setting the culture for the students, right? And it, and it looks different at different grades. For the elementary students, I'm already registered for Step Into Learning for a couple of my kids, there's, there's really no replacement for that opportunity to, you know, I think every, every family has those things that they want to convey to the teacher, and, you know, well, my, my child has this particular thing, and he really likes this, and she really likes to do that, or these are some of the things that really bring her joy. And that would be overwhelming to, to have that all come at once, so it's nice to provide that opportunity to spread that out, and for the, the students to get that one-on-one connection, too. And then at the, the middle school and secondary level, involving the, the more senior students to create that culture to set all these students up for success. I, I just, I think it's a great plan. Thank you for the invitation next Wednesday, and thank you for sharing it. I, I just am really excited about all of this, and excitement around back-to-school is palpable at my house. You know, everybody's like backpacks and school supplies, and the locker fear is real. That is, that is definitely true, too. But, yeah, it's, it's exciting, so thank you so much for sharing it.
And I think for parents or community members who might be used to the way we used to do things, which is starting after Labor Day, I think it's important to mention that if you're not sure when your student goes to school, you can look at the back-to-school website page because it very clearly lays out that not everybody starts school on the same day, which is the way things used to happen. same day, which is the way things used to happen in the past. And just a little safety note, school buses are going to start running on Monday. So watch for our students who are crossing the street. Watch for our crossing guards, who have been asking us particularly to put out that safety message for their safety, because they're there to make sure that our kids get to school safely. And do not go around a stopped school bus with the arm out, because there is a significant fine and other criminal penalties.
Kathy, can I add to that?
Sure.
I want to say thank you to Townsquare Media. They're running free radio ads for us right now, our partnership with Rochester Police Department, reminding drivers about that. So it'll run through Labor Day. And then we're also partnering with a local company to put up some billboards. So those will be visible throughout town as well.
Great. Anything else?
I downloaded the app.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, very much.
We'll see you in the buildings. Item 4.4 is Board Member Committee Updates. Does any board member have updates from committees or other activities to share? No, I've just been busy here. All right. The next item is our Consent Agenda. Items 5.1 through 5.9 are on the Consent, Consent Agenda. Would any board member like any item removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The Consent Agenda has been approved. Superintendent Pecow.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. We have, at least since I've been here, established something of a pattern of acknowledging when members of the Rochester Public Schools family move on, in a very literal sense, pass away. And unfortunately, there are two to share tonight, one of which is on the Consent Agenda, and one of which is so recent that it's not yet, but that it will appear next week, next meeting. As you see in memoriam, Jill Glennahansen passed away on July 19th. Jill started with the district in 2015 in our Nutrition Services Department, and was a lunch lady, proudly wearing that title at Gibbs and Bishop Elementarys. She was most recently the elementary lead for Nutrition Services at our Facilities Service Center. Sherry Knudsen and our leadership told me that Jill was someone that when we were short-staffed, which we have often been during the years of the pandemic, Jill was someone who was always ready to pitch in heroically and doing nine jobs at once. She also worked at the Rochester Walmart North for 30 years before we got her. So she probably learned something about working, serving people in a stressful working place there. I didn't know Jill, but I'm told that in her spare time, she had an amazing green thumb, and she loved spending time growing vegetables and flowers in her garden. So we are thinking of Jill's husband Brian, her children Sydney and Colin during this transition. And I'll also add, we are thinking of Jill's pet cats, Pierre and JoJo, and her German Shepherd, Augie, who were very important to her as well. Not in the Consent Agenda yet, in memoriam is Jody Bangert, who I briefly did get to know before the conclusion of her time in the school district. She was another longtime employee in Rochester Public Schools, who passed away on Friday, August 11th. Jody was actually the second of three generations of her family to work in this school district. She served in multiple roles over 23 years. She worked in registration and records. She was the office manager at John Marshall. She was the office manager for Student Support Services. And then when I met her, she was the absence and leave specialist in Human Resources. And then she retired in January 2022. And I will always treasure a conversation with her that I had early in my tenure that was one of those incredible opportunities to get clued in quick on what really mattered in an organization. She was somebody who counseled, supported, assisted countless, countless staff. She will be deeply missed. And Jody's daughter, April Bangert, is the office manager at Mighty Oaks, and her sister Julie Jimenez Coles is our coordinator in Human Resources. And so we are thinking of April and Julie and their entire family at this time of transition and are grateful for the work that Jody and Jill did for the kids of this district.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is 6.1. It is a focus topic, and it is a grading procedures update. Superintendent Pecow?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Pull up some points I'd like to make. As the school board is well aware, in Rochester Public Schools, like in many school districts across the country in recent years, we made some modifications to our grading procedures. It went under the title Grading for Learning, which was the approach that predated my time in Rochester. And it was an effort that had many different goals, one of which was to encourage continued student effort and persistence, and trying, and rewriting, and growing academically. Another of which was not to include in the grade things that weren't what in the field we'd call the results of a summative assessment, a final test or a final project. And so we directed that staff would not be including things like class participation and homework and other things in those grades. We also said that things that historically did happen in many classrooms, like getting points for bringing a Kleenex box for the class, also would not happen. When I got here to Rochester in 2021, I heard a lot about Grading for Learning, and certainly talked with many teachers about it, also parents, students, especially high school students, and a number of you. And so last year, we launched an effort to begin taking a look at that. We began with a working group that had teachers and other staff members, several students. And you heard from the coordinators of that working group last fall, who recommended some modifications in the structure of that. We then did a broader survey in the spring that we had hundreds of teachers contribute to across the district, and generated thousands of comments, literally. And so we took that, results of that working group and the survey feedback that we got, and over the summer, spent time actually looking at the research on what we know about grading. And so that has resulted in some modifications of the procedures for grading that I am sharing with our teachers and our students and our families through various vehicles, starting in the next couple of weeks. In the board website, Simbly, you can find a concise document that summarizes these changes that I want to briefly touch on now. Mom Su and her team have also put together a video that summarizes those that will also be going out. And then under Dr. Abamu's leadership, we will be asking that school teams in our secondary schools, because this applies to middle schools and high schools, not elementary schools, come together for conversations across our staffs to be sure that everyone is on the same page with these modifications going forward. So what are those changes? The, the first is that we are directing that, I should be a little clearer, I am directing, that summative assessments, which are the final test, the final project, the final paper, a final performance, need to count for between 70 and 100% of the grade. So the majority of what students are getting as a grade in a middle and high school class is the result of their final demonstration of the knowledge and skills that they've learned. The 70 to 100%, as you're going to hear in every category, is an indication of teacher discretion. We trust our teachers, who are closest to, to their students, who know our content. But we also know that if we don't have parameters for students, and they are going from class to class during the day, and grade to grade over time, with radically different approaches to grading, it doesn't send those students clear signals about what is good enough. And so there's teacher discretion in each part of this strategy and parameters, though, to broadly stated, make sure our educators are on the same page. So summative assessments are 70 to 100% of the grade. Obviously, that leaves room for some other factors that, under Grading for Learning, were not supposed to be counted in students' final grades. So the first of those is what we would call formative assessments, those checks on student learning that are done on the journey to the formative assessment. And those are things like quizzes, observations, checking student notes. It happens in very different ways by subject area. Those are allowed to count for between 0% to 10% of the grade, again, with teacher discretion deciding where that falls. If a teacher doesn't want to include quizzes in that grade, they have that option. If they want to include it, it can go up to 10%, a meaningful but not determinative amount in the grade. Homework, which, as I'm sure all of you remember, can encompass reading and answering questions on a text, completing problem sets, completing worksheets, using educational software to dig deeper into content at home, conducting or summarizing research or reading, all kinds of things like that. Homework can count between 0 and 10% of that grade as well. And then the final category is class participation, students' direct engagement in learning in class. And that can include everything from lab experiments, to projects, to group work, to performances, role plays, discussions, presentations. Again, that can count between 0 and 10% of the grade. And so in sum, up to 30% can count for factors beyond the summative assessment, but at least 70% need to count in that summative assessment. Couple other points that were relevant in the previous approach to Grading for Learning that we're also going to modify. There was a requirement that students be allowed to retake a summative assessment as many times as the student chose to do so. And last year, we modified that somewhat as I got extensive feedback from teachers about both how manageable that was, and that it might be sending to students the signal that you really didn't need to study until you actually not only saw what was on the test, but got to try a few times. So what we're going to be saying going forward is that there is a place for retakes. All of us can learn from trying again. And so students must be given the opportunity to retake a summative assessment at least one time. Teachers can choose to do that more, but they must give it one time, but they are not required to give it more than one time. Second, that retake must be completed within two weeks of the date when the summative assessment was either given, if it was a test, or due as an assignment. That two weeks is intended both to help our students not let it drift so long that they don't remember what they were doing, but also to help our educators manage the many challenges they have in, in, in getting our students through the rich content that they're delivering. Once again, a teacher could extend that period should they so choose, but the district guideline will be within two weeks. A really important point, and this was quite important to the teacher feedback we got, before you can retake the summative assessment, if there were assignments that were intended to prepare you as the student for that summative assessment, you have to do those assignments before you can retake the assessment. And so if you were given, for instance, formative tests or practice work, and the student takes the summative assessment and wants to retake it, you need to get that practice work done before you can retake the test. The logic there being, of course, that we want to have our students actually taking those summative assessments seriously and putting in the work for them. There were some really important insights in Grading for Learning that we don't want to lose, for sure. And that really, at its core, is saying that we don't want to factor into grades things that don't really reflect the work students put into a class and what they have learned in it. And so, very importantly, we will be saying the district-wide parameter for the 23-24 school year for certain, and potentially beyond that, is no extra credit. Students have got to get done what is assigned in the class during the class. Now, teachers, our teachers are ingenious. They will, and they do every day, have multiple ways for students to demonstrate learning. So I'm confident our teachers will have ways for students to stretch further. That is different than ways to frankly make up the points I didn't get in the class. Second, you cannot count absences or tardies in a grade. Student absenteeism is definitely an issue in this school district and at every school district. And we know, and we saw it during COVID, in an array of educational indicators, when kids are not in class, it impacts their learning. But the number of absences should not be factored directly into that grade. Same thing with number of tardies. That's not to say we don't need serious and effective strategies in our schools for dealing with absenteeism and tardyism, or being tardy. But those are not factors that should be directly counted in the grade. Why? They're not direct measures of what the student did in the class or the learning they mastered. And then finally, those actions that do not involve academic effort. The, the stereotypical bringing Kleenex box and getting some points. I will tell you, I was last year meeting with some of our students, and I used that as an example of something I was positive was never happening in Rochester Public Schools. And all of them corrected me and said, nope, that does happen. No points for Kleenex, no points for treats, no points for bringing something to the class that is not reflective of learning. That was a good part of Grading for Learning that we don't want to leave behind. When you include that in the grade, it's what the economists call noise. It confuses the signal that we're trying to give to the student about what they should do and what they should have learned. Finally, I will say this is the beginning of a journey, not an end. Grading is, as everyone who was a, a teacher, and I think anyone frankly who's a student knows, this is a fundamental aspect of the educational enterprise, and we always need to get better at assessing student learning. And so we will be creating a grading committee that will be comprised primarily of teachers from diverse backgrounds in all grade levels, very much including elementary. And this will be led in the Office of Academics under Dr. Abamu's leadership. And it won't be a short-term working group. It'll be an ongoing committee that continually looks at the issues around grading. And if you read the summary of the survey that we got last spring, and the memo I sent to the board following that survey, teachers generated more than a dozen major issues that they suggested we need to deal with that aren't even touched by the concerns that I raised today. And all of those are really important things for us to learn. One of the other school districts that has been a part of our deeper learning collaborative that's based at Harvard is Revere, Massachusetts, an urban district right next to Boston. You wouldn't even know you left Boston and went into Revere. And when I was out there looking at deeper learning, I went to a presentation by two of their teachers who'd been on their grading committee, which had been operating since 2016. And it was quite extraordinary how, over time, they had gotten clearer and clearer about what is an A? What is the right way to assess student learning? How do we do it through means that are not just a test at the end of the semester? And so we want to put that in process, and we'll be looking to the Office of Academics to be recruiting folks to serve on that grading committee over time. And there's a series of issues that we'll be handing them, as, in particular, evaluating how these changes in procedure go this year. The changes I've just described are, at least for the 23-24 school year, we will get, get feedback on them over the course of the year. My hope is that they will extend beyond this year, because, you know, we've got to not move the goalposts on kids continually and give them a clear sense of what the expectations are. But if there are some issues here that we learn aren't fully meeting the needs of our students and our educators, and also our parents and caregivers, we will get that feedback and make some further adjustments. So this is, I think, an important milestone, but as I've said a number of times, just a waystation on a longer journey that will continue.
Questions or comments? Dr. Marvin?
I, I think this is absolutely a number of steps in the right direction. I really appreciate this. One question, for, for parents who have been in the past checking Skyward for their students' grades, and if their child has a teacher who is just going to give maybe two summative assessments that quarter, what would be the vehicle for the parent knowing whether their kid is, I mean, other than asking their child? And I know teenagers never fudge the truth about anything. But how would that parent be able to determine whether their child is doing what needs to be done before the grade comes out, if there's nothing on Skyward or whatever?
Thank you, Dr. Marvin. That was providing grades, information on grades and student performance to parents was one of the top issues. Teachers identified as needing fresh thinking and coordination. Parents do have access through Skyward to a lot of information, but we know that we need to systematize how that actually works for parents. And so my answer to you is, that's the work ahead of us. I will say, we learned last week in our negotiations with the Rochester Education Association, that a teacher in Rochester who receives a Rochester student from another school, right now cannot see the information that is in Skyward from the student's class at the sending school. I said that can't be. It is. We have to fix that. So thank you. We have already started a process to look at what we need to do. Right now, that is actually not transparent to the receiving teacher. So it's, it's left upon a teacher in school A to inform the teacher in school B of how the student was doing and where their issues were. That does happen through some low-tech means. It's the same thing with the parent. The technology should enable that in a comprehensive, comprehensible way. So that's a big one. And I think, just to say too, for Dr. Marvin, I know I'm kind of being a little circular here, when a teacher is not putting lots of assignments in, because maybe they are emphasizing the summative, we do need to help those teachers- emphasizing the summative, we do need to help those teachers think about information for parents and caregivers that want to be engaged. Because I understand frankly being college-like in your grading. In colleges, you don't get eight working assignments before you have the midterm or the final. So there is a, it's not laziness, there is a logic of like, there are few important grades in this class. That doesn't leave parents and caregivers often with that much information. And so we do need to think about ways we can provide that to families. I'm also excited, and I see Jennifer Spindler-Craig here. I think our family engagement work needs to have grading and student performance and helping families understand that as a strong theme of the work going forward.
Director Workman?
Just thinking about this, I'm wondering, it's been a long time since I've been teaching, and I don't think we had Skyward back then, but we did have some way of communicating information to parents. But if teachers have the option of including some of their homeworks, assignments for the grade, I would think that that option would be available to every teacher. So would it be possible for a teacher to have that record of those homework assignments, but just they don't count in the grade so that the parent would be able to keep some tabs? I think that would be helpful for the teacher, too, in terms of, you know, gosh, you haven't done any of your homework, you know? We've got this assignment or this summative assessment coming up, you know? You know, so it's sort of a check between the student and the teacher as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that, Director Workman. What was compelling about what I saw in Revere, Massachusetts with the teacher committee is they, in a teacher-led way, over time, really got on the same page about issues like that. And so it wasn't the district mandating how you do it, it was teachers saying, wait a minute, we got to give parents more, okay, but what's not too much? And so it was answering some of, technically, yes, there's the potential to put all those assignments in, but there's also how much is too much, you know? And so I think that finding ways to think about how we help teachers balance that in a way that is, as I said at the outset, reflects teachers' discretion in their subject, in their class, but gives clear parameters so we're sending to students. And then I think your comments and Dr. Marvin's comments, also to parents and caregivers, some clear signals about our expectations.
Director Cook?
So as I sometimes do, I took the opportunity to roadtest this plan with a rising eighth grader who has a future as a debater, I'm sure. And it was well endorsed because what was immediately graspable from that student's perspective was that these are clear guidelines. Whether I agree with them or not, and whether I could quibble about some aspect of the homework component, it's on one page. That's a great test right there, or two pages, really, but it's, it's clear. And there's a lot of value in just having expectations that are clear. So I think it's a very good step.
Director Barlow?
And I just want to comment regarding formative assessments. I appreciate that a part of this includes the reference to formative assessments being a tool that can provide ongoing feedback that can be used by teachers to inform their teaching and by students to improve their learning. I thought those are two important offerings that are identified here.
So building on those past two comments, it is possible that a teacher could have formative assessments or homework that happened but don't count in the final grade?
Absolutely. And that was the theory of grading for learning. It was never that these things weren't happening, happening is that they would happen without including it in the grade. And where I've landed differently, and people, I've had people, very, very like thoughtful people who would take a different approach come and meet with me and have said, we shouldn't need to give points for that. It should happen because of the relationship with the kid, with, because of the formative feedback I'm giving. And I say to those teachers, you have the option to make it 100% as the summative assessment in your class, if that's the approach that you choose to take. I think it wasn't giving our teachers some tools that, I know when I was a teacher, I would have wanted to have had in my toolkit.
And as far as the summative assessment, it is also possible that a teacher could choose a single summative assessment to count for 100% of the grade.
At present, yes, it is. I think that's one of the things that, I think there are very few teachers in RPS who would do that.
I was going to ask, is that best practice?
You know, it's hard to necessarily assume that. You do take the AP test once, and that gives you a score that is quite high stakes for certain kids. So it is not unheard of with high school students to have a structure like that. I have not encountered teachers in RPS who are basing everything on one summative assessment. That would run a lot of different risks of everything from what's going on in the student's personal life at that moment, to stereotype threat at that moment, to I just missed some core content at the end of the year, but I was hitting it out of the park at the beginning of the year. So I don't think that's happening much, but as my example of the Kleenex shows, I often don't know everything that's going on.
Is that part of, is that part of the data that you might be collecting over the year to see what's the, what is the pattern? The mode, the median, right? How many, how many teachers are doing two summative assessments? And how many are doing five? And how many are doing one?
I think it could be. One of the things that I tried to do with this nomenclature, sorry, I can't find a better word, is to define those buckets with enough specificity that you could sort of say, this is a formative assessment, this is a summative assessment, this is class participation, this is homework, so that we would be able to actually start to get tighter about what we mean by those things. I think if, as this grading committee undertakes its work, we do, you could start to collect data on the kind of stuff. Right now, what it would mean is somebody looking in Skyward and saying, oh, yep, that's class participation, that's formative assessment. That would be a very cumbersome, even Peter Rock couldn't get that done quickly, so. But yeah, I think we could begin to be much more data-driven about grading.
Okay. Director Garcia?
I don't necessarily know that I have questions or just more reactions to this, so I didn't, when I worked in a school district, not in Revere, Massachusetts, but in Chelmsford, Massachusetts, I felt like some of these things were easy because the student population at the school was fairly homogeneous. And so what they weren't having, and I guess like things like, you know, SES and race and all of those things, were pretty consistent across the board, so it was easy to kind of make decisions like that where you just sort of narrow in on like what's important, what's important, what's important? Because you didn't have a ton of factors, dynamic factors from the family, whereas I think like a more diverse, even school within a diverse district can be difficult to like determine what that would be. And so like if you're, if you feel like all of the students at a baseline would probably be capable of achieving X, that's great, but then what happens when this particular student just doesn't have the support at home, or they don't maybe have the internal or external resources to engage? So like a singular summative assessment would totally take that kid in a class. So I just want to appreciate how like difficult that is for educators to figure out, like how do I make my class accessible not only to all students, but also each individual student at the same time? And I would say, I did mention this before, I think from my own personal experience, I felt like similarly to your child, like if I had, if I know this at the beginning of every class, like this educator says that 70% of your grade is summative, 30% is formative, here's the breakdown, that I was able actually in my, I think it was like a senior-level math class, to figure out, because I did so many extracurricular activities, I knew I didn't have time to do all my homework, because I figured out how much I needed, what grade I needed to get on each exam to be able to not have to do homework and still get an A in the class? So those are, I mean, not every student is going to do that, but I think it was helpful for me to figure out, like I just needed to get X on every single piece of exam because I wasn't going to do the formative stuff, like I just didn't have time in my schedule. And I also think that that can be incredibly anxiety-provoking, and so I'm interested to see like student feedback on what this is going to look like. And not even just like their verbal feedback, but some of that data I think that Kathy is hoping for. And there were other professors or teachers that I had like in high school where it was several summative assessments, and we did have lots of little, I guess what you would consider formative, but they weren't a percentage of grade. So it was like if you were going to write a big paper at the end of your, you know, English class, then you had to do like the bibliography and your thesis and like all of these things, but they were more checkmarks. Like you had to do them in order to get to like summative assessment one. And if you didn't do those things, summative assessment one was going to be an awful grade, but you didn't get graded on these other things. They were just like steps to get there. And so I think sometimes that can be confusing for kids, too. Like maybe there are steps to get to this place, but they're not necessarily, they're formative, but you're not getting graded on those things. And so like providing clarity to students around those things, too. Because I think, I appreciated that teacher's effort to shape our behavior in learning. Like you had to do all of the steps in order to get to the end, and not every single class is like that either. So this is a huge undertaking, and I think similar to Dr. Marvin, I appreciate that this is lots of steps in the right direction, and I still don't think we're like quite there yet.
And I think you also mentioned the communication piece. One of the things I, first of all, how do you anticipate this is going to be communicated to the students? Is it going to be class by class? Is it going to be part of their overall orientation? And the other piece I think of is, is I remember my, my kids' individual syllabus or rubrics that they were getting, they didn't all look the same class to class. And I'm wondering if, since the structure is supposed to be the same, but the choices that the teacher makes will be the variety, is there something that we can, do you think it's a good idea to standardize this information so that if a student can lay out their five classes, they'll know, teacher to teacher to teacher, this one is a, you know, 80%, summative, and this one's a 60% summative, and they don't have to go hunting for it?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Nathan. This is, you know, there's the old cliche, I'm reinventing the airplane while you're flying it. This is one example of that, where we are making these changes on the cusp of the school year. I think we can get there. We're going to need our teachers, give our teachers time to make their decisions about where they're going to fall on these percentages in their classes. And I hope, and I believe, discussions within our schools, within departments, and across grade levels to give them times to talk about it collaboratively. So I think we're going to have to get tighter first as we give people a sense of this. Every student, middle and high school student, every parent and caregiver and every staff member is going to get the handout that's in the board website, simply the video that we did and a concise description electronically in the next couple of weeks. And we'll be asking each school community at the middle and high school level to engage students in discussion of this on the timelines that work for them. So I wish I could say that this was going to be right away able to get to the point that you're describing, but I think that would be a good place to land over the year ahead, where you could give students a clear sense of, in my class, this is where I fall on these percentages, and then students could kind of look at it across and have some awareness of those kinds of.
I also think like kids just know that stuff. Like there's always like the hard teacher, right? And so they're not saying like, I am 100% summative, single assignment teacher, but like you know that that's that teacher. So like they, I think the kids also have like their own interpersonal like data about educators, like are you the easy teacher where you have like 40 summative assessments, like itty-bitty, you know, like spaced out throughout the semester? Or are you just like, this is my one, one-shot and done? And how do we support students in managing that? Because when you do go to college, it's like that, too. Like you have some classes where you could very easily get an A barely just by showing up because you have to do the thing that's right in front of you. And some of you just, I'm going to record lectures until the end, and then maybe I'll come up, you know, take the final. So I think like, it'll be nice, I guess, in the way that my brain would have worked in high school. It would be nice to be validated on the like, Ms. Vaughn was like a really hard English teacher, like Mr. Epley was the really hard math teacher, and like we know that because they are these percentages. But I also think like, they probably won't necessarily need to know those numbers, to know the thing that they already know about how difficult or easy a certain class is. But now the teachers are going to have that knowledge of themselves.
Right. And I can anticipate, Director Marvin, that this is going to be a topic in a future student school board meeting.
I just can't remember, can't resist remembering one of my favorite high school teachers, Richard Demers at Central High School in St. Paul, Minnesota, who never once said test or assessment. He only talked about OTEs, opportunities to excel. And so we had an OTE, and we all learned that phraseology. And we would say, when are we having the OTE? As an opportunity to excel. And I remember it 30-plus years after that very, very vividly. And it was, it was actually not just jokey. Like he really described these as opportunities to excel. And so it was, it's fun thinking back on those educators who shaped your life while you're dealing with things like this.
Trying to shape students' lives yourself.
Trying to support the educators who shaped the lives, yes.
Any other questions, board members? Great. Look forward to updates. Right, item 7.1 is a monitoring item, school resource officer data from 2020 to 2023. Superintendent, pick up.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. I want to invite our Chief of Schools, Jackie Peterson, to come up, our Director of School Support, Chris Lingan, to come up, our Coordinator of Safety and Security, Julie Clayman, to join us. This is not an action item or a decision item. As Chair Nathan said, it's a monitoring item. It is part of the regular reports we want to give this board on the climate and safety and operations of our schools. You reviewed our discipline data from last year, a couple of weeks ago, and we are now looking at some related but distinct information on the work of our school resource officers in our schools. We continue, and in fact, I was over at the Rochester Police Department Headquarters today, to work with RPD to get tighter about common data definitions and data sharing. This board has, I think, very constructively pushed us in that area, starting with some comments Dr. Barlow made about a year ago about do our data systems link with what RPD sees in reports, and should they? Because we shouldn't necessarily know what happens to the very small number of students who do get involved in the legal system, because that doesn't take place in our schools. And yet, we know that is an important factor for this school board to monitor. So we continue to get better at that, and I want to thank the three leaders here who will be giving us an update on this. And we look forward to your feedback on ways we can continue to meet the board's needs in this area over the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll just get right into the details here, and Chris is going to take us through the data to begin with.
You see on our first slide here, these are the numbers or incidents that are reported by RPD. This is, could be anything that happens outside of school day, inside of school day, could be an incident where somebody comes to an SRO to give information. You see on there animal type of things, if there's, there's a wide variety of pieces within that. The question is going to come up, are these what are, are these numbers what we have in Skyward? These are not the Skyward numbers, because an incident that happens with an animal or an incident that happens with a medical concern, whatever, would not generate a Level 2 or a suspension piece within it. That's what we track, remember, those numbers. We don't track all of those. Would these be, would our numbers be embedded in this? Yes. So the question comes up, should the numbers be similar? While our numbers for incidents of Skyward, and I think we talked about it in student discipline one, we had 184 that we generated within our own Level 2s. If you look here, if you add up all those, there's way more than 184 total.
And what we can say is we've removed, we've talked in the past about, so there's a traffic stop that just happens to occur near Century, so the police data would show that there was a police action at Century High School, but it was on a Saturday, it didn't involve any of our students. We've removed those. So this data does really directly correlate with our students, but not necessarily with Skyward, as Chris explained.
Good point. This, I lost my train of thought on the next.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
I can share, I know the question comes up about ticketing or citations and arrests, and that data isn't on this slide, but in talking with Officer Blonik, according to the RPD data, we had 22 citations slash arrests. Our data shows two arrests, 20 citations. It's important to note that those citations aren't necessarily ones we requested as school leaders or that even the SRO initiated. It isn't uncommon for a parent to request charges. So the 20 citations don't necessarily represent what we would have requested of an SRO. Officer Blonik also shared that there were 42 incidents that were resolved through restorative justice. incidents that were resolved through restorative justice, that the SRO will explain to the parent and student how that process would work, and they have the option to participate. So we're getting more and more involved with that route versus citations, which we all really appreciate. As, and I think our SROs and Sergeant Blonik recognize the importance of any kind of alternative over a ticket or citation.
And if I could jump in there on that. I was able to attend one of those restorative justice. I was asked by the, by the SROs if I could jump in and do that, and I did. It was, I had never, I didn't even know really what it was until I was there. It was, it was, it was wonderful. I thought this is a great component to have that the SROs can turn to. And I think the students who was going through that realizes just how much better it is when they hear what has happened from a victim's side. And not only that, but I think it's important to know that once the SRO does send somebody to a restorative circle such as that, once they're finished, they no longer have anything to do with making sure that that student has done their.
Restitution.
Yeah, their restitution. Their hands are done now, and that is something that the school, we kind of have the Three Rivers does it. They kind of look into that. So once they send a student there, it's important to know that RPD is no longer using them or doing that anymore.
Could I?
Superintendent?
So I, again, as I tried to allude, this data is a work in progress, and I, I know I am not yet satisfied with, with where we are. So let me just try and make sure, and of course Julie, you were a member of our RPD, but Jackie and Chris, you work a lot. When we say in incident, excuse me, incidences, a way to think of that might be an interaction that an SRO has mostly with a student, but it could be with a person in crisis who is in the school, a parent or some, somebody like that. That is recorded in, these are, this is data from Rochester Police Department, that is recorded as an incident. An incident in most cases does not lead to a law enforcement consequence. The two consequences that you referred to in your discussion, which board members was today, with Sergeant Blonik, so we are, this is very much in real time, a citation or a ticket, or an arrest. And can you remind us Jackie, the number of citations that you got from RPD today that I wish was in the PowerPoint, but that I want to be really clear with board members. And again, we will be endeavoring to get this in a format so that the format doesn't change in our reporting.
So over the course of the entire school year, across all of our school buildings, there were twenty citations.
So twenty tickets or citations were issued. As Jackie mentioned, sometimes the SRO makes the decision that it is ticketable. My strong sense is that they are both personally and under direction from the, the force to do that at, as seldom as possible, if ever. We do have parents sometimes of a student who's been involved who push for a citation. But twenty citations. And then there was a combination in the data of citation and arrest.
Right.
Our data shows how many arrests for the previous school year.
Our data shows two arrests. One, one occurred on, at a, at one of our, our high schools, outside of one of our high schools. It was not requested by us. It was actually a situation that posed imminent danger to the school, and so there was arrest made. And the other one was at one of our alternative sites. Again, not something we requested, but was a situation that presented imminent danger towards staff. Those were the two arrests across all of our programs all year.
And obviously, we're talking about two individuals that would be identifiable, so we are keeping this general for reasons I know board members are well aware. So thank you for letting me, Madam Chair, kind of try and break that down. And as I say, in future years, we want to have that represented in a way that board members can follow, and that also respects student privacy and what we shouldn't know about what happens in the legal system.
Right. And just another nuance, Chris, Chris was mentioning if there's a response to an animal, we don't enter that into Skyward because there's not a behavior. There could also be like theft at the middle school. Some of those things are reported directly toward an SRO. A student may go to an SRO and say, I need help because my cellphone was stolen. And that becomes between the SRO helping the student with the avenues to, to maybe retrieve their cellphone. And it isn't an incident in Skyward, because it wasn't a behavior that we responded to.
And, and one other thing that board members have access to, and any members of the public who are interested, for the first time this year, this presentation, we put our working definition of each of these incidences in the board materials. Because we are working to get tighter and tighter definitions of this, so that we can begin to use the same language in RPS that RPD is using when that's relevant. So you will see definitions that we tried to keep as plain language as possible, that are, that are listed in the board materials that describe what those things are. Because some of these titles are less obvious than others, like medical. And so those, those definitions are there as well. And thank you for putting that together, because I know that took considerable work. For a cop who's, knows exactly where to record something, it's not as intuitive at all for an educator to know what each of those categories means.
Okay. Next, we're going to move on to the components of the SRO contract that were formerly known as the MOU, now integrated into the contract, and Julie's going to go through these.
Yeah, as you can see, these are the ones we have listed, and so let's, let's get started. Okay, so this is our connection with administration. This is a, a day, every single day, the SRO comes to, to their site, to their secondary school, and they check in with the, they get there before students arrive. And they greet kids, they talk to kids, hang out with kids, sometimes they play basketball. They also meet with the administrators every morning. They go over daily things that they feel is important, that they need to discuss, or things that maybe kids need a little extra connection with. So they talk about that. And they do that on a daily, in a basis. On a weekly basis, I know they do sit and attend some of the administration meetings. They go in, they don't sit through the whole one, but they do make sure that they are there at least once a week. They kind of talk about any additional supports or resources that students may need. And then I do know that they, they excuse themselves, and then the administration continues on with their, with their weekly meeting. Monthly meetings, they do go over their safety drills, they formulate safety plans. And I must say that I've been finding that the SROs are now kind of meeting with our security ESPs, or protectors, as I kind of like to call them, ESPs. And along with the administrator, they will, they will assist and kind of go over safety measures, what to be on the lookout for. And what I mean by that is not necessarily a student, but somebody on the outside who may be walking in, in the schoolyard that may not, should, should not be there. Maybe a, a door that's being left open, not by staff, but sometimes by students letting other kids in. So they talk about those things, and they go over the safety drill plans. And so it's, it's really good that I think the communication that I'm seeing with the SROs and our security ESPs and our administration, when they do that on a monthly basis, it's, it's awesome. I think that's something new that they really pushed this year. Equity specialists. So this is something that I myself have noticed as I, on my daily basis, I, I like to go out to the schools and make sure our SROs are out and seeing what they're doing and kind of, and I noticed that the last year, the relationship between the SROs and the equity specialists have been amazing. I know all the SROs, when I talk with them, they say, I could not really do my job without them. Boy, the benefit that they have really helped. They collaborate together and have really, I think they've really made some strides together with, working with students. They meet, when I ask, well, how often do you meet with them? And I, I get, we, I talk to them every day, just like I do administrator. And so then they go over things that they feel are important, that maybe students are, are having some struggles. They do collaborative building walkthroughs together. They meet with students that they feel need to be met with during the week. Maybe they just need a little bit extra, you know, TLC, and they, and they meet with them. They meet with our B, Black Student, BSU. They connect with those students once a month, and they attend their meetings. So that's kind of something new that has happened this year, and it's been a really good relationship. So I, I'd really like to see where that's going to continue to go. But I know that the SROs are really working side by side with our equity specialists. Okay, so what do they do when they get into the classroom? So the educational portion of this, what do our SROs do? Well, they told me they get into the classrooms, they try to get in weekly, whether that is in the health class, teaching the dangers of drugs, vaping, alcohol, the fentanyl crisis. I mean, I think it's a very important thing that the, I know our SROs are trying to, to educate our students on. Government classes with discussion of the constitutional and their civil liberties. And I think it's great because they tell me that kids ask some really brilliant questions, sometimes even stump the SRO. But, but they said it's, the kids are really amazed at, they're really amazed at some of the questions that students are asking. Sociology and psychology, that's where you get into the current events and the connections with law enforcement with the community. And all other classes, they, they just go in sometimes when, when a teacher asks them to come in, or they get, they may be walking in the hall, and the teacher may, hey, come on in, Officer Smith, and come in. And then they'll come in, and they talk, questions and answers. So I think those teachers are really trying to get the SROs to come in more, and they really are connecting a lot with our students in the classroom. I think a new component that we did this year with our SROs was doing our driver's education this year. Not only did they get into the classroom and talk about driving conduct and traffic laws, but they also got behind the wheel with the students. I think at first they were a little apprehensive, but I was told later that it was actually a good connection. And I think the students really liked it, that they actually had a, well, who knows if they really liked it, but having an officer sit right next to them. But they said, no, it was really, they, they really enjoyed doing that. And I think that will continue on next year. So we look forward to that. So our other educational, which we have been doing in the past, and we're still continuing to do, is to reach out to our students on different topics. And we know that Officer L has done social media and sex extortion. Not only that, but the other officers are getting out there and doing this as well. The assault, disorderly conduct, and what the criminal elements are of that, that students don't always necessarily know, sometimes what, what can constitute a crime. They talk about that in police and community relationships. And it's, also you should know that they do have these recorded, so they are available for the teachers if they need them in the future, or if they want to present them to a, to a class.
Staff supports. We'll let Julie take, take a breath here, have a drink. The staff support piece, we, we had a presentation to our, to our secondary administrators last week, or, yeah, last week, on drug trends, which was an amazing piece that, that our, one of our police officers came in, not one of our SROs, but came in and gave drug trends and pictures, and just what to see, what they're seeing, and what we could be able to see with, with, with our schools. It was amazing to watch. I learned more in that little presentation of an hour than I have in drugs in a long time. It was fabulous. The other piece is our threat assessment teams. So all of our, all of our secondary sites have a threat assessment team. And then we also have what is considered a county or city type thing that, that we go to with our RPD and Mayo Clinic and Homestead County, that we talk through some of our threat assessment pieces that may rise into larger things within the community. We learn a lot within that. And that's a piece that we work very closely with RPD, not necessarily SROs, but more with our, our, our RPD and that, that part of the Homestead County.
I should chime in for a second. The drug trends presentation was coupled with the Homeland Security presentation, and it was inadvertently, just for secondary, we're going to go back and repeat it with elementary. My colleague, Amy Icke, was pointing out the drug trend piece would be very helpful at elementary, as it points out how, how, how much some of the, some of the street drugs can look like Sour Patch Kids or Skittles and those kinds of things. It might be even good for us to do some parent education on those pieces as well.
Our family forums. We did three community outreach forums this year, and what that was, is kind of like a town hall discussion, where we held those at one of our, one of the, I don't even remember what the church was, but it was one of the cert members churches that they had. We did two of them there. We did one at RPD as well. And that's where we had the families come in who wanted to talk, and, and everybody get on the same page, and everybody work together, and how we can, how, how can we collaborate and make things better for, safer and secure, and how can they know that their students are safe? So it was a lot of information from all different people, families, RPD, school officials. So that was kind of really neat to see. The other one is we, the SROs told me that they did quite a few restorative practices. Instead of restorative circles, where instead of getting a ticket and you'd go to restorative Three Rivers, what they did is when a crime really had not been committed, but things were on the edge, and things were looking a little rocky between some students, and it was a continual ongoing basis, the SRO made, reached out to the families of the, of the students and asked to come, bring them in together into the school. And they collaborated and sat down and talked. Sometimes it, it would get a little heated, but I think all in all, we, I think everybody wants the same thing at the end of the day, right? And I think some families were, they thought it helped. And, and I know the SROs thought that things seemed a little bit better between the students. So I, I think they will continue on doing that with families and reaching out to them to, to resolve issues that come between students. And I hope that does happen. We were going to do a scheduled and hold a social media disorderly conduct forum for parents and caregivers. And we had things kind of all lined up and ready to go, and then we had the cyber attack. So unfortunately, we were unable to, to do that, but this fall, we're hoping to get back on board and get that going right away at the beginning of the year. Equity training. So I spoke with Sergeant Blonik, and I asked him, you know, what exactly did you guys do throughout the year? He said they did the cradle to career, they participated on committees there, and they will be doing that again this fall. And they, they did implicit bias training, along with equity and diversity training through RPD. Apparently that is a mandated course that they must do every year. And then I guess there's a Boys and Girls Club training that I think, Dr. Pikel, you were on that, that focused on the needs of the unserved students. And they said, I, I don't know if that's going to happen again. But those were the four, some of the things that they did with their equity training this year. Now, some of the things that don't really, summer, oh, I'm on the, on the wrong one. Summer schedule. Okay. So what does an SR do in their summertime? Right now, they're doing a lot of downtown foot patrol. As we knew, do know, a lot of our, our students do kind of hang around and, and hang down there. And I know they've interacted with a lot of the kids. They've been there for Thursdays on First. But then they also got in, did a lot of bike and pedestrian safety at the SAC school throughout the summer. And currently, what we're doing right now is the Police Youth Summer Camp. And that is happening, that started today, that will go until Friday. This is where we've taken, we're having twenty students, who are going to get the opportunity to participate in team building exercises to promote cooperation, communication, team building, problem solving. And tomorrow, I know they go to Eagle Bluff, and I get to join them. So I was asked by the SROs if I would come, which I'm excited about, because this is a camp that we had actually been talking about since 2020, me and some of the other SROs, that we were trying to hope to get that going. Sergeant Blonik picked that up and expedited it. And so now it's in play. And so this is the first year, so it's a pilot program, and hopefully this will continue. And it should be exciting. I do know that Eagle Bluff is tomorrow and on Thursday. Followed up with a picnic with, with RPD, some district employees, and our twenty students who I think are looking real forward to it. Additional activities. So this is just something that doesn't fall under those headings that we just discussed of our contract. I asked the guys what all they did, and so this is some of the stuff, plethora of stuff that they gave me. They did seatbelt safety challenge at all three high schools. That included not just the challenge, but talking about the importance of seatbelts. Polar plunge participation, a couple of the guys did that. They did a lot of field trips, I guess. They went out with the, the biology classes and, and participated in that. Kids got to know them. Again, the Q and A sessions at the elementary schools, they went out with fire trucks, police, and paramedics for those days. Visited all the fifth grade classrooms this year to make their introductions, to let them know that, what to expect when they come to middle school, and not to be frightened, and that they are there to, to be, assist them and whatever their needs are. Hosted a table at school conference nights to answer questions and provide resources, including gun safety this year, and information. Hand it out gun locks, so that Hand it out gun locks, so that was, that was new this year, and I think that will continue as well. They attended sporting events, musicals, concerts, and plays in their off hours, and because they wanted to show school support for their students. And again, they worked extra activities, such as football games, dances, school carnivals, graduations, and senior parties. And I don't, just to add a little added piece in this, we want to do a shout out to our SROs, Brian Smith, and to Tim Condon, for they received the Rotary Achievement Award this year for their dedication to youth mentorship within our community. So that was a, a cool award that the, that they got. And we did pick our sixth SRO. We did have Officer Arns, who filled in for us this spring, and who did a great job, and the kids really enjoyed him. But he is working with our community action team, so he went back to there, and he did ask that, he hopes that he can come back as a school resource officer in the future, so he really enjoyed that. But just about two months ago, we did do our interviews for our sixth SRO, and we chose Officer Sky Royston, who is, who has been selected. He's been with the Police Department for two years. But what I think was a, a huge component in picking him was that he is a social worker. He did 20 years of social working and decided at this 20 years of that, that he's going to change careers. So he went into law enforcement, and he worked in the last 20 years within our schools. And he specialized in what he said, autism spectrum disorders and intellectual developmental disabilities. So we feel that Officer Royston is going to be a fantastic fit for our schools. He's already been in, and he already knows kids, and he already has the two years of law enforcement, so I think he's going to be a great asset. That was a lot of information.
Director Cook.
Yeah, thank you for the thorough information. One of the things that caught my eye was the presentations in government classes, and I just thought, if I was a student, because I, I, I would have been really interested to hear from a law enforcement officer about my civil liberties and about things that are not crimes, like Fourth Amendment about like, an introduction in the way of, it's not a crime to say, no, you can't search my car. And that's what the Fourth Amendment's all about, and, you know, the right of the people, the peaceably assemble, and here's, let's talk a little bit about the First Amendment. I don't know if, I'm not sure how far you could go with that, but boy, if I was a student, I would have been really engaged in that, because it's like flipping the perspective, you know?
And that is, that is the class that the SROs really enjoy the most, because kids do ask that exact question, and they really get into it, and it gets deeper and deeper, and, and you're right, kids get educated.
Yeah, no, that's cool.
Anyone else?
Oh, Dr. McLaughlin. I'm interested in the Police Youth Summer Camp, being a pilot.
You want to come with me tomorrow?
To Eagle Bluff? I might be interested in other aspects, probably not Eagle Bluff. But I'm curious to know what age students and how they were picked.
They are from sixth to 12th grade. It was a collaboration between SROs and the principals. They decided which students should come on.
And do you know anything about that criteria, like how, how they pick them?
I don't. I don't know.
You do?
I actually met with them today.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, and it was very interesting. They worked a lot with the equity specialists to recruit the students. The students all chose to do it because of the leadership component, which I think is promising for our youth leadership work that's going to be going into design phase this year. When I said, why'd you do this, they said, I want to be a better leader. It was a diverse group of students in a number of different fronts, mostly boys, but three young women who very much were engaged in the conversation. They had a day-to-day that was mostly relationship building and talking, and what I did with them was an exercise around relationships, of course. And then they're doing the, the next two days. I, when I heard about this, I'll be honest, I said, you know, this sounds great, it's not a, you know, police recruitment camp, is it? And the answer was no, and it's not. Not that I have any, anything other than admiration for a young person who decides to become a law enforcement officer, but this wasn't that. It was very much about leadership. I wish I could say that as I asked all the students, they were all equally positively excited about the start of school, because it's looming for them. So they are very much looking forward to the ropes course, with a few notable exceptions, who are very nervous about doing that. It's a pilot, and I think as I talked with some of the students and then some of the SROs afterward, it's pretty clear that there's some interest in this kind of interaction outside the realm of law enforcement and criminal behavior around leadership and confidence, and the ability, which of course, law enforcement officers do all the time, to go into daunting situations. And so I think it's an interesting beginning. Not surprisingly, like a lot of efforts, they don't have an evaluation plan, so I was like, oh, but I think we can still help them do some reflective feedback from the students. It was very much an RPD effort. We didn't run it, but they did ask for our help. The principals were involved, but in particular, Yahy, our equity specialist from Mayo, was there. I just have to say, I do this exercise that some board members have done, where it's based on the research I did at Search Institute, and the kids reflect on the relationships in their lives. And there were a number of the students from Mayo who identified Yahy as a developmental relationship in their lives in a very powerful way, and it was actually quite moving as he was in the room. So it was about SROs, but it wasn't, in a pretty unique way.
And can I ask if I'll about, about, do you know if there's any topic about, something particularly interesting, minus the police and community relationships? Is that talked about in this academy?
As of today, I don't know what they spoke of, but I know the next two days, it's strictly just team building and ropes, and I've never been to Eagle Bluff, but I know that, I know that companies, or I shouldn't say companies, but work teams go down there after hours. I know that some of my platoon mates back when I was an officer would all go down there, and it's just, it's just a way to, to really solve problems, could, it's the team building thing. And I don't think there, there's going to be that kind of talk. I don't know, but I can report back to.
And I get that, as terms of the leadership and, and team building. I'm talking more about bigger picture, police and community, and how they can work together here in Rochester.
That I don't know.
Okay.
That's, it's a very perceptive question. They stayed away from that, because they really felt like they did, this was not supposed to be either law enforcement prep or law enforcement school community. I, I think that that could be a powerful addition. I think they would need someone besides the SROs facilitating it, because it was all the SROs, and then the mayor was there, and I was there for part of a different session. I think it might have been productive, but I think just having a facilitator who would have been there to talk about that. Right now, in their first version of the camp, it doesn't get into some of those issues. They, of course, I think loom large, as you're sitting there at Police Headquarters with our students and a room full of officers. I mean, the students chose to be there, but I think it's a subtext that this year, I might be wrong, but I'm pretty sure, because I asked them to talk me through the whole curriculum plan. Right now, it's neutral on those issues. I, I would imagine that, that they would be very open to a facilitated effort to surface that. So it's a really, it's a really good thing for us to take back to RPD if they choose to try and continue doing this again.
And I would encourage them not only there, but then also in the classrooms, either talking about the current events in the sociology, psychology, or in the government classes, that I think those would be very educational for the students to wrap that particular topic into those discussions.
Dr. Barlow.
Yes, I have one statement, two questions. The statement is, it's good to see how you infused the components of the contract into the presentation. That indicates that you have listened and have responded to concerns that various board members have expressed in the past, so I appreciate that very much. First question deals with the glossary of terms, or SRO incident definitions. I'm curious as to how well you think they may mesh up with RPS referral codes?
That's a great question, and I could answer that, but I have no internet right now going to that part.
Mic drop.
So, not to have, be intentional in creating a mic drop, but it would be useful if, you know, what we're referring and what they're reporting now are, one, in the same things. And then, secondly, I still am curious, and maybe I missed it when the discipline data was presented, the actual referrals that RPS makes to RPD. And you did note that there were two citations or tickets issued. I'm not sure that they're a result of a referral, in-house referral. Just more of a curiosity thing that I, I'd like to maybe hear more information on that if possible. My reason being, I think it does matter, though it has been suggested that we don't need to know what happens to our kids once the system gets a hold of them. Well, how else will we learn as a system ourselves to maybe better serve our students and/or inform the community as to how they can assist us in helping our students navigate the world they're a part of? And so just a thinking out loud type of comment, I'm not sure it can result in any action on your part or reporting out on your part, but I think it minimally merits some type of discussion, whether, yeah, it's something we can do, no, we're not going to bother with that.
I think it was, it was interesting to me, the low number. I, I felt like it would be low, I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure, the number we would get back from Officer Blonik, but 20 is a very low number, considering it was 190 days of school and the number of kids we have and the number of.
It's 20 citations.
Twenty citations, yeah.
And how many arrests?
Two.
And I regret, Director Barlow, that we didn't have that for you in writing. It should be in this presentation as part of a clear flow.
Sure.
And I think the two arrests, we're keenly aware of, because that's something very unusual and concerning, and when, when those both happened, we were very involved to know this was happening.
The data thing that you asked about at the start, remember, we've got, the stuff that we get, that we put in for our discipline codes is through DIRES. That's a state thing that, that we, that we follow. We have exactly what they tell us to put in there. So that's what we follow. So then the RPD has their own pieces. There might be some pieces in it, but we have to follow what, what DIRES has, so it's easy for us to report to them, what we're, what we have going on.
So final comments, then. There's a process used in converting one language into another transliteration. So maybe we can engage in some transliteration here, in regards to the conversion of what is, what we're required to report, and then what RPD utilizes, or you guys use in NCIS or whatever coding system you're drawing from, and to find that common ground where, you know, a apple, oh, well, we know what an apple is, you know? I like the glossary, it's very plain, very plain. And, and yet I think over the years, we have struggled with, well, it says this in terms of the mandated codes we use, but the, the meanings may not necessarily be as clear as the glossary that RPD. I know we have limited control over that, but if we can somehow develop our own working definition for the purposes of reporting out to the board, that's all I'm suggesting. Okay?
I think that the glossary of terms, the main difference is there are terms in here that we, we don't have, like, we don't have something like suspicious circumstance.
Sure.
Which I think in the March presentation, we broke out three different terms that felt like they could be a little bit more ambiguous. That was one of them. You know, we don't have animals, for example, we don't have, but, but the definitions regarding behavior are, are very similar. I would say they match up really well, in terms of like assault and those types of violations.
Thank you.
I think I just want to build on what Dr. Barlow said about, about the terms, because as I looked through them, and I tried in my head to connect them back to what we heard from the discipline data, not all of the terms in this glossary, we would categorize as a level two referral. I mean, animal, for example, or alarms, or accidents. And I'm going to ask you a question, Chris, off the top of your head, what was the total number of level two referrals? Do you know?
If it doesn't take the internet, I can tell you.
Okay.
RPS last year?
Yeah, in, in the, in the presentation.
Like 3,000?
Right. And the total number of incidences in this data is 400. So if we were, if we were able to dig down into the data and identify those incident categories that might crosswalk to a level two referral, as I read this, the SRO involvement is much lower than the total number of level two referrals. So is it fair to say that SROs are not involved in the vast majority of level two referrals in our buildings?
It's very fair to say, and then you remove Project Lifesaver, remove missing person, remove animal, community service, none of those are related to a discipline incident, so then we get a lower number than, you know, the 184, I think.
Right. So just to build on that, maybe just to make clear again, how do SROs interact with our school administrators and staff to become involved in a situation in a school?
Well, I think in terms of, of, say there's a fight at school, a lot of times, they're in those areas where there tend to be more physical incidents, like a lunchroom or, you know, busy passing time. So they may not be called by administration, but they may see something and help to stop something. But they, they also can be called in if there's a report of a theft, if there's a report of a possible criminal situation. They may be asked to, to assist. So there are times when the admin, when the SRO is involved, there are times when parents call the SRO and ask a parent, a parent request that the SRO get involved. The, the primary activity for our SROs, if you're out in a building for a week and watch them, is interaction with students. It's not breaking up fights or responding to possible crimes.
Dr. McLaughlin.
Just to follow up to Director Barlow's question, that seems to me, and this might be somewhat my prior experience and might be outdated by now, but is there something between a citation and an arrest? Like a referral where they're not arrested, but something has happened that gets referred without an arrest? Are you following me?
Restorative piece or three?
Well, no, it could be something, you know, that they're not, someone in law enforcement makes a decision not to, not to ticket somebody, not to arrest them, but there's something else.
And a referral off to the county attorney for a charge?
Correct.
That, if, I guess if the level is a gross misdemeanor or felony, then yes, they do.
And I would ask if we could, for next year, consider that as well? That there might be things in here that could lead to charges?
Yes.
That aren't a citation, because that's fairly minor. Arrest is clearly very serious at school, but there might be something in between that could help us better understand these numbers as to what happens to those students? We don't necessarily need the full feedback loop of what happened, but is there a whole other set of data that we're missing in that two and 20, 20 and two?
Dr. McLaughlin, my understanding from Sergeant Blonik today, because I asked exactly this question, is in 2223, there were no other law enforcement actions other than citation, arrest, or no action. Even the restorative practice may have included a citation, but it was then dealt with through restorative practices, so there were either no citation or fewer citations. Now that, it's a very important point. There are other legal actions, but that in our data last year, it was 20 tickets and two arrests, and there were not other, there certainly are, to your point, other legal pathways that we should include in our data collection, because it's possible that in future years, there would be consequences that would not be captured by citations and arrests. So as we build a tighter system, we will absolutely look for other categories that it sounds like you have some familiarity with. And then, as we've said many times, the vast majority of incidents didn't result in either a citation or an arrest, but resulted in an interaction that was recorded.
And I suppose the other potential category is something starts with an SRO. And I suppose the other potential category is something starts with an SRO and needs more investigation, so that's referred on, that might not be part of this as well.
Yeah, if it's a situation where they're, unfortunately, a sexual assault, they take the primary, there's the report, and that gets sent immediately to our investigation, into the investigation unit, and then that can be sent, is what you're talking about.
Right, it could be that too.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Darren, is there anyone who wants to go to Ingrid Blomtum?
Yes. You tell me how it was this year, and I'll consider next year, how about that?
She's still in some serious recruiting. Great. Before we move on to the other items, board members, would anybody like to request a break?
Yes.
All right, let's, recess until 7:45 or 7:50?
Seven.
7:45? Yes? All right, we're turning at 7:45.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent, any information to share?
Yes, but I'll be brief. As board members know, increasing philanthropic support for our work is one of the building blocks of the strategic plan. We have had a good amount of success even before we've established leadership to guide that work, and this is one of the most recent examples. The federal funding source that was made available to states for this grant was highly competitive. Ninety-eight percent of the proposals, I'm told, were not funded, and we were funded at the full amount, almost half a million dollars that we requested. And what's interesting is that rather than proposing to fund one of the priorities of the grant, which are frankly almost exactly aligned with our strategic plan, we said, "Give us funding to bring all of this together in a highly effective project management structure." And so for the next three years, we'll be creating a small but mighty office of project management, led by a coordinator, supervisor, director of project management, that will begin to work with our school improvement plans and then our system change plans at the district level to build a muscle that educators frankly are rarely trained in and myself included often don't wake up every morning thinking about. There's a famous quote, I don't know if it's famous, a quote that I've used a number of times from W. Edwards Deming, the famous process improvement guru from the business world, who a lot of his innovations contributed to improvements in productivity in the corporate sector. And they invited Deming in 1991 to a meeting of educators to talk about education and continuous improvement. And Deming said, "It seems to me your field is one of, quote, 'miracle goals without methods.'" And I say somewhat reluctantly, I think that's true, that we set these no child left behind goals or every student succeed goals, and we don't have processes of getting better at getting better. And so what this grant is going to allow us to do is to bring expertise into the district, to build our capacity to meet deadlines, to have highly effective execution, to have transparent communication. And not that one person is going to do it all, but they're going to build the capacity of our teams at the school and district level to do that. As I've talked like with colleagues and people at Mayo Clinic, they literally have hundreds of people who do nothing but this all day, and we have nobody who does it. In the second biggest employer in the city. So I'm really excited about this. I'm thrilled that the state teams that reviewed our proposal have supported it. And I look forward pending board approval of receipt of these funds to posting that position. And anybody out there who wants to bring your project management skills to the cause of educational excellence and equity, we've got a job for you.
Dr. Marvin?
Quick question. I know that grants can be incredibly complicated and cumbersome to write. Who, in the event that the board passes this resolution, who do we have to thank for getting it written and submitted?
Excellent question. We have none other than a name that has been behind many of these. Denise Moody deserves great credit. I, as I want to do, kind of came up with the goofy idea and loved it in Denise's direction, and she made it happen. So, thank you Denise, who, I don't know if we're simulcasting yet, but she's one of those people who does watch board meetings at night. So she would be watching if it was live, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that. It's been, she's amazing at it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Please pass on our congratulations to her as well.
Yes.
Item eight point two, approval of 2022-2023 budget adjustments as of June 30th, 2023. This is an action item. I will read the resolution and ask for motion and second, and then we will have information and discussion. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve 2022-2023 budget adjustments for November 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2023 in the following amounts. $2,890,123 of additional revenues for a grand total revenue budget of $358,404,585 and $3,379,815 of additional expenditures for a grand total expenditure budget of $432,217,595. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve 2.5 full-time equivalent FTE of additional positions as summarized by the following amounts. 1.1 FTE additional education support professional positions, 1.0 FTE additional operations professional positions, and .4 FTE additional teacher positions. Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Superintendent Pica?
We are pleased to provide any additional information that board members may be aware. Otherwise, I would urge you to approve this rather standard adjustment.
Board members?
I just have one question, actually. I just want to make sure we have the dates in there correctly. That this is a November 22 to January 31, or is this through June 30?
As the title indicates. That is a good question.
Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Carlson.
We are making a budget adjustment from February 1st, 2023 through June 30th of 2023. So anything that doesn't say that is probably not accurate, then.
Okay, so the resolution where it says the budget adjustments for November 1st, 2022 through January 31st should actually read February?
1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2023. I must have fallen victim to copy and paste and not completely updating that accurately.
Board members, can we just take that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Wow.
Just accepts. So we have the dates correct. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution as friendly amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the resolution has been approved. Okay. Next item is eight point three, August 3rd, 2023, policy committee recommendations. This is an action item. The policy committee met on August 3rd, and we propose the following recommendations to the school board. Because the changes to all these policies come from changes in Minnesota law from the recent legislative session, they came to us from MSBA model policy changes, so the board is required to make all these changes. Policy 208, Section 4, adoption and review of policies, Part D allows the board to approve these changes at a single board meeting. I'll read the resolution and ask for motion and second, and if received, we'll open the floor for information and discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accept the recommendations of the policy committee for the policies listed. And I will read the short version. Policy 424, 425, 507, 509, 513, 515A, Procedure 515A, Policy 532, 601, 602, 603, 604, 613, 616, 618, 620, Procedure 620A, Policy 621, and Policy 708. It's been moved and seconded? All right. Dr. Workman?
Yes, I'll go ahead and start with Policy 424. The purpose of Policy 424 license status is to ensure that qualified teachers are employed by the school district and to fulfill its duty to ascertain the licensure status of its teachers. The change reflects an annual report required by Pelsby, which is the Minnesota Professional Education Educator Licensing and Standards Board. Policy 425, Staff Development adds paid orientation or professional development for paraprofessionals. In Rochester, they are known as education support professionals. The purpose of this policy is to establish a staff development program and structure to carry out planning and reporting on staff development that supports improved student learning.
The purpose of Policy 507, Corporal Punishment and Prone Restraint, is to describe limitations on the use of corporal punishment and prone restraint upon a student. This language reflects legislative changes. Application provisions are added to Policy 509, enrollment on non-resident students. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the application and exclusion procedures used by the school district in making said determination.
The purpose of Policy 513, Student Promotion, Retention, and Program Design is to provide guidance to professional staff, parents, guardians, and students regarding student promotion, retention, and program design. Gifted and talented student provisions and early admissions have been added. Procedure 515A is the companion to Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. This procedure was updated to reflect new prohibited directory information for students' name, address, and phone number. Policy 532, the provision for the use of reasonable force has been added to Policy 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams. The purpose of this policy is to describe the appropriate use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove, if necessary, a student with an individualized education plan or IEP from school grounds.
The purpose of Policy 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals is to establish broad curriculum parameters for the school district that encompass the Minnesota academic standards and federal law and are aligned with creating the world's best workforce. There are added definitions, updates to the World's Best Workforce Plan, and obsolete provisions on reading have been deleted. Policy 602, e-learning provisions have been added to this policy, which is the organization of school calendar and school day. The purpose of this policy is to provide for a timely determination of the school calendar and school day. Per statute, e-learning day means a school day that may offer full access to online instruction provided by students individually, teachers, due to inclement weather. Although Rochester Public Schools does not have e-learning days for inclement weather, this section is included in the MSBA model policy.
Policy 603, the purpose of Policy 603, Curriculum Development, is to provide direction for continuous review and improvement of the district curriculum. This change updates the district advisory committee provisions and deletes the process for curriculum development. For Policy 604, Curriculum Development, the purpose of which is to provide for the development of course offerings for students. Updates reflect required academic standards and prohibit curriculum discrimination or discipline. For Policy 613, the changes to this policy, graduation requirements, include updates of definitions and adds ethnic studies course provisions per state statute. The purpose of this policy is to set forth requirements for graduation from the school district.
The purpose of Policy 616, School District Accountability, is to focus public education strategies on a process that promotes higher academic achievement for all students and ensures broad-based community participation in decisions regarding the implementation of the Minnesota K-12 academic standards and federal law. Proposed changes reflect updated definitions in Policy 618, Assessment of Student Achievement. The purpose of this policy is to institute a process for the establishment and revision of assessments to measure achievement toward meeting the Minnesota academic standards, track academic progress over time, and provide Minnesota graduates information related to career and college readiness. The changes delete graduation standards, add reports, and update district advisory committee provisions.
Policy 620, Credit for Learning recognizes student achievement that occurs in post-secondary enrollment options and other advanced enrichment programs. It recognizes student achievement that occurs in other schools, in alternative learning sites, and in out-of-school experiences such as community organizations, work-based learning, and other educational activities and opportunities. The transfer of student credit from out-of-state private or home schools and online learning programs and to address how the school district will recognize student achievement obtained outside of the Rochester Public Schools online learning is removed. Definitions are updated, and it adds healthcare credit. Procedure 620A is the companion to Policy 620, Credit for Learning. These procedures outline the process for the transfer of academic requirements from other school districts, post-secondary institutions, online learning outside the school district setting, and credit by assessment. The titles of offices are updated.
And there is also a new policy, Policy 621, Literacy and the Read Act is a new policy from MSBA. This policy aligns with Minnesota law established in the Read Act and on other topics related to reading. The purpose of Policy 708, Transportation of Non-Public Student, Non-Public School Students, is to address transportation rights of non-public school students and to provide equality of treatment in transporting such students pursuant to law. The change allows a written plan for non-public people transportation.
Having heard all those summaries, do we have any questions, comments?
I can't resist thanking the policy committee for all the work that they do. I mean, I'm there, but you all do the heavy lifting, and it's really stunning.
Thank you. Well, and I also have to give credit to the cabinet members for having processed all of these changes in the legislature and also engaging in conversations with us at policy committee about the implications for the district. It's not just changing the language. They really do dive in, and many people have heard about the long list of changes that the legislature has put on school districts, but I feel really confident that we are well underway in implementing all the things that we need to be implementing for this fall. So is there all no further discussion? All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Thank you, board members. The next item is eight point four, Approval of Superintendent Goals for the 2023-24 School Year. I'll read the resolution. It is an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of ISD 535 adopts the recommended goals to guide the work of the superintendent during the 2023-2024 school year. Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Superintendent Pica, any information or updates?
We had an extended conversation about this at my study session, and then we, I gave a pretty detailed overview when this was in the prep fraction category. So I'll just briefly say there's several big categories. The first is quality of implementation. I think the discussion we just had of the grant we received for project management speaks to the importance of that goal. The second is the new strategic work that we'll be doing this year in the design phase for the last wave of our systems transformation initiatives. The third is using the leadership framework that you used for my evaluation last year for the coming year, building on the areas of strength and areas that we agreed would be a focus for my work. And then finally, four goals that are outcome-based and tied to our strategic plan.
Board members, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has been approved, as have your goals. Item eight point five, it's our turn, Approval of School Board Goals for 2023-24. I will read the resolution, and then we can dig into the content. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve these board goals for the 2023-24 year as agreed upon after discussion at the August 15th School Board Meeting. Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. So board members, you have a draft of the goals that came out of our conversation at the last meeting. And now's your time to share anything from typos to thematic modifications that you'd like to make.
I can start with three typos, if you want.
Okay, typos.
We're missing periods at the end of the measure for Initiative Two.
Okay.
The first measure for Initiative Four, and the very, very, very end of the document.
This is what I count on all of you for. Dr. Marvin?
Yeah, under Initiative, under Goal One, Initiative Two. It's a great idea. Have a board member greet members of the community who are attendants at board meetings. I'm just wondering if that last part, and answer any general questions about the meeting agenda or procedures. I'm assuming that if people have quick questions, they'll ask and give a quick answer, but this might be interpreted as if there'll be a person there to sort of conduct a forum for visitors. And I think that could get, if we have someone greeting people, and then they are sort of approached with a question that's going to take 15 minutes to answer, they're no longer a greeter. So I wonder if we could just eliminate that and answer any general questions to the end of the thing.
Remember who proposed this originally, so I'm going to give that to them, if that was part of their intent.
Oh, sorry.
Let me remember.
I think I proposed it, and I agree with you, Dr. Marvin. I think the intent is, the way I had envisioned it, was to foster a welcoming environment and to express gratitude for the people that come to the board meetings to either provide input or just be part of this process of making policy, I guess. So, yeah, I would, I'd agree with the amendment you proposed.
So would you like to just delete everything after at board meetings?
Yes.
Including at board meetings? Just leave it at attendance?
Who are in attendance.
I mean, we're already saying that we are at a board meeting.
So just in attendance, period.
Sure.
So it's after community?
After attendance.
After attendance.
Members of the community are in attendance, period.
And I would say to board members, it's probably fair that should a person come in and say, "I'm speaking tonight, what do I do? I've never done this before," the board member could sort of serve as air traffic control and refer them to Assistant School Board Clerk or, you know, they want to know just some general questions about who's going to be here tonight, or where do I find the agenda?
It's what greeters do.
Okay.
Warm, welcoming, quick answers to quick questions.
Okay.
There you go.
And check their receipt on the way out.
Maybe hand out stickers or something.
Anything else, board members? Dr. Cook?
Initiative Four, I think we're referring to the 23-24 school year.
Thank you.
This is the night of a thousand edits.
This is what these people are for. Anything else? Wow, guys, I'm impressed.
Thank you for word skipping.
Oh, I did have one more other suggestion. Sorry, Goal Two. I was a little bit worried about in an effective way. And was that clear enough? Perhaps another way to describe it is talk about making decisions that align with the strategic plan initiatives.
Can you say the whole thing? I'm sorry, can you just say, like, say the goal as you mean it to be?
The board will support implementation of the strategic plan by providing adequate financial resources and making decisions aligned with strategic plan initiatives.
Dr. Marvin?
I might suggest almost the same thing, providing adequate financial resources and making informed decisions on strategic plan initiatives.
And I think originally, when the word effective came up, it was to commit ourselves to doing it by a certain date that we were going to not stand in the way of the progress of the strategic plan by delaying decision-making. But since the initiatives itself have the specific date of July 1st, 2024, that sort of establishes the effectiveness standard, so. All right, great. Are you okay with the informed version? Making informed decision on strategic plan initiatives and then delete in an effective way?
Actually, is, for Initiative Two, under Goal Two, is July 1st, 2024 a timely? Will that be timely enough for the decisions outlined there, the redesign of the transportation system?
It's, well, it's by July 1st, so not later than, is how I read that.
I anticipate that we will definitely bring you those decisions early enough to implement them, and that certainly on the transportation side, it would be before that and probably on the finance side as well. I think it's a good deadline because it says we're getting it done this budget year. But we will absolutely bring them to you in a timely fashion.
So if it's this budget year, should it be June 30th, 2024, since that's the end of the fiscal year? Nitpicking. So we've got a June 30th count.
I'm a little bit worried about the communication to the community that we not finalize the redesign of Transp, Intel that late. Would we want to separate these out and have that one as an earlier? When do we have to have it done to be effective?
I, the reason I propose this deadline is right now, this is so fluid. I wouldn't be able to give you an alternative date that I'm positive we could hold to. I know you need to make these decisions by either June 30th or July 1. The clear expectation is that we'll be bringing these to you. We know we need to bring you a recommendation on the transportation by December 1, that's already in a board motion. But that will just be a recommendation, and then we will clearly have more dialogue and community input after that. So I, you have my firm commitment to be bringing these decisions to you long before July 1 or June 30. I'm not positive right now what the timeline will be for when between now and then we will bring them, so I'm not sure what I would put in instead.
But June 30th would be like the drop-dead moment.
Absolutely. I mean, that would be, the logic of that was that's the point at which you are assessing your goals for the previous year. So for sure, you got it done in that year, and you didn't achieve the goal if you didn't take action by that point. But it still leaves the entire school year to actually get the work done. I would be glad to talk with, you know, our team about some, and we're going to, we actually had our first discussion at executive committee this week of the 2024 board calendar. And so as we work together to design the 2024 board calendar, which we'll bring back to you, and we have a discussion, we will definitely include these two decisions on the 2024 board calendar in very explicit ways.
Well before July 20, well before July 1.
Yep.
And I think as far as the dates, we should either have them match or not because by statute, we have to approve a budget by July 1st, 2024. So that's the only reason why the decision matched. And I don't think we have a meeting on, like, June?
30th.
30th. Or July 1.
I was just thinking the end. Mr. Carlson, am I correct in saying the end of the fiscal year is June 30th at midnight or 11:59 or something?
Anything else? Nope, nope. All right. These changes have been noted. So if you remember the changes, given the changes, all those in favor of the resolution including these goals, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Thank you, board members. Item nine point one is the A B C D. Any items that a board member would like to bring forward for consideration? You might want to get your meeting agenda hats on because at our next meeting, we will be going over the A B C D for 2024. And there are standard items that we roll over from year to year that we're working on, but then we're going to be having a conversation about the major DISC presentations and some of the other major topics. And so if there is something that you really feel you want to see on the agenda for 2024, those are the ideas to bring because that's where we'll gather them all together and figure out where they fit. Do you, by that meeting, we will have some agreement as to when our meetings will be in 2024?
The dates?
Yes.
I think we definitely do dates, and then I want to get board feedback on content, and then we will quickly thereafter bring a draft of the full 2024.
Calendar.
Calendar.
Right.
So this will be a really important opportunity for us to hear from you about what you, issues, process you want to use. And then we've already started, as I mentioned, thinking about the content of the year ahead. So we'll be able to quite quickly turn around a pretty detailed, a very detailed agenda. But we will be able to nail the dates down for sure, right Laurie? Yep, Laurie says yes, so it'll happen.
And you'll have materials to prepare you for the meeting on the 22nd, list of the topics, so that you won't have to come up with a list from scratch.
And that's a study session, right?
It's a study session, yes.
On this, just on this topic?
No, there's a few other topics on the, the study session on the 22nd. Yep. Item 10.1, Other Business, we have, as we said, a study session on August 22nd at 5:00 p.m. A regular meeting on September 5th at 5:30, a study session on September 12th at 5:00, and a regular meeting on September 19th at 5:30 p.m. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:16 p.m. Still not bad.
This is the other note I made.